Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Welcome, everyone, to the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of emergency, there are exits at the rear and the front of the auditorium. Huntington is a smoke-free school district; there are no smoking on or about school grounds. Currently, turn your cellphones off. I will now administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members, Christine Bernacki, Thomas Di Giacomo, and Linda Tyne Deanna.
We're doing it again?
Yes.
Yep, every single camera.
Yes.
I, Christine Bernacki, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee according to the best of my ability. Thank you. It's not that long.
I, Thomas Di Giacomo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee according to the best of my ability.
I, Linda Deanna, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee according to the best of my ability.
Copy.
Great. I will now administer the oath of office to Superintendent of Schools, James Colansky.
I, James Toby Colansky, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools supporting the best of my ability.
I will now accept nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2018-19 school year.
I nominate Jen Hebert.
I second it.
Any further nominations? Okay, I have a nomination and a second. All in favor? Okay, that's everyone.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, Jen. I will now accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2018-19 school year.
I nominate Barry Ferris.
And I'll second it.
Any further nominations? All in favor? That's everyone. Congratulations, Barry. Okay, well, now swearing the new officers.
Okay. I, Jen Hebert, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Now, ready? I did not do another.
Oh, seriously? We'll do a little switcheroo.
I, Barry Ferris, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
It's like way down there. It's not way.
It's way down there.
It doesn't just follow. It's like three lines after.
I guess we're switching. Oh, we've got to take a lot. I feel like I'm moving.
This is a lot for me to handle.
I know. It's so nice to be next to you. Good thing you unplugged. Exactly.
Yeah.
Comes with the equipment.
We've never been this close.
I know. It's a whole different perspective. I got this. Heber? Oh, yeah, this is me now, huh? All right. Here we go. Thank you, everybody, for your vote. Appreciate that.
Seriously?
I love you. Okay. So, the district clerk, this all goes for me now, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Joanne Miranda as District Clerk for the 2018-19 school year out of stipend, uh, to everything.
You can read it.
Out of stipend of $21,648.64. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, that was Tom and Bill. Any, we don't have any discussion about this. All in favor?
That's everyone.
And that's everyone. Hold half a tire. And we're going now to the district. Oh, do we have to?
Oh, you're good.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Jill Miranda as District Treasurer for the 2018-19 school year.
I say it every year. No relation.
I was just gonna say, that's why I left the time. No relation. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, that's Christine in a second.
I'll second.
Barry, all in favor? That is everyone. Sorry, I was waiting for Tom to say it. Oh, and now we need them to take the oath of office. Me? Seriously?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay. All right, this is kind of turned back. Here we go. Yep. I, Joanne Miranda, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk according to the best of my ability.
I, Jill Miranda, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Treasurer according to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much for that. You. All right. Back on it. Okay, and this is the standard workday for elected appointed officials. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to adopt the attached resolution establishing a standard workday for appointed officials. Everybody has a chance to see that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
Motion.
Barry, in a second.
Second.
All in favor? It's all of us. Great. Thank you. I should have called the lozenge. Okay, General Counsel. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Gercio Gercio as General Counsel for the school year 2018-19.
At the listed rates.
And there's remuneration as follows. Do I do it?
No, you can just say at the rates indicated.
Oh, at the rates listed below. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Tom, in a second.
I'll second it.
And that is Christine.
Sorry.
Okay, and all in favor? Okay, that's everybody. Is there any time I'm gonna stop and just ask this question where I should be stopping for discussion or questions, or is that just items of discussion?
You can always open it up for discussion because if anybody has a question.
We'll interrupt. Yeah, we'll hype up.
Yeah, how about we do that? You guys just stop me if you need to say anything.
That doesn't mean you, Paul. No.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Gercio Gercio as Labor Counsel for the school year 2018-19 with a retainer of $86,500 an hourly litigation rate for services of $2.55 per hour for litigation services other than those related to collective bargaining agreements between the district and its employee units. I need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Up, I got Barry in a second. There's Tom. All in favor?
If you want to shorten up the recommended actions, it's all public.
Okay.
You can read all the numbers and...
Oh, I can just, so I can just read without numbers?
At...
Okay, that was good. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the BOE to appoint R.S. Abram and Co. as the district's internal claims auditor for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Christine, in a second. Come on, Linda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Jump in.
It's good to really save yourself up for a really special vote over there. Okay, an external auditor.
Be sure to tell Abrams.
And it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the BOE to appoint Colin Endonaski as the district's external auditor for the 2018-19 school year, and I need a motion.
Motion.
Barry, in a second.
Second.
Okay, Christine.
Sorry, I'm living on.
Motion in a second. All in favor? That's everybody. Okay, now, here's a question for you guys. I am on the audit committee. Is there anybody that would like a place on the, on a committee that doesn't have one?
Make the, make a motion first.
Okay, here we go. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint members of the audit committee for the 2018-19 school years indicated. We get a motion in second, and then we can discuss it. A motion?
Make a motion.
Christine, second. Linda? Okay, so here's my discussion. I am one of the audit committee members. I will continue to be on it if nobody else is interested in stepping up, but I know that...
I think you actually can.
I maybe can't?
I think you...
Still on the committee.
I thought when I read some...
I'm on the policy committee. I'll swap out of the policy committee with somebody.
Oh, 'cause I read something that said that the president is...
I don't know if the president...
You know what? I prefer not to be on the committee anyway, because it's gonna be Tom to take the person.
Well, I've never been on a committee, so whatever committee has an opening, if you would like, I could give up my special ed committeyness to Linda as an introduction for her and do one of the other committees for the last three years I have not served.
Okay, unless you'd rather be on audit.
That's fine.
I know. What's that?
So, you could take my place would be on audit, but if Tom were to switch to audit, you could...
Tom, do you prefer audit?
I'll take, I'll take audit.
Okay, so I'll do policy.
Yeah, I do too.
Is that good with you, Linda? And then you'll do special ed? I'm fine. I think based on my experience, special ed or policy would be a good fit. You know, a lot to... Right. Merch yourself in already, so...
All right, so you make the motion to appoint Bill, Tom, and Rich McGrath as the community member to the audit committee, but you gotta do it.
All right, so I need a motion to appoint Bill Dwyer, and Tom Di Giacomo, and Rich McGrath as our community member to the audit committee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Barry, in a second.
There you go.
Bill, thank you, Bill. I can hardly see you over there. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's everyone.
You can probably discuss first. It makes more sense to do the motion after you have the names in hand, so, policy takers.
So, policy takers. I think we already know, though, right?
Make that motion.
Yep, hold on. There we go. Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint members to the policy committee for the 2018-19 school year as, well, just to appoint the members to the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Barry, in a second.
I'll second it.
Christine, thank you. Okay, so, I think Tom, you're stepping off. Christine, you are stepping off. Barry and Xavier, are you still interested in continuing on?
Yes.
Okay, so, then I'd like to make a motion to appoint, I just got confused, Barry Ferris, Xavier Palacios, and Christine Bernacki to the policy committee.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Christine, and Linda, thank you. All those in favor? All right, did you get all those names?
Warning the three of you that a July meeting is forthcoming.
I like how you saved that for after.
I wasn't ready. I wasn't ready.
All right, we're up to the point of school position. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Ed to appoint corporate medical consultants as district physician, physician, physician for the 2018-19 school year. Sorry. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Tom, in a second.
Short.
Xavier. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? It is upon recom, this is for the appointments related to CPSC and CSE. It is upon recommendation, oh, we're gonna switch this one.
No, this is not the one.
Not that, no.
It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Christine Bernacki be appointed to review CSE and CPSC.
No, you skipped.
Oh, I skipped one.
Skip one.
Number one.
Number one.
J one.
Yeah, you're right. It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint members of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education as outlined in the attached memorandum. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Christine, thank you, in a second. Linda, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, everybody. Now, we can see here. Now, how do you want me to do this?
You can just insert Linda's name there.
Okay, great. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Linda Deanna be appointed to review CSE and CPSC minutes if needed outside of the timeframe of a regularly scheduled board meeting, and may accept associated recommendations proposed by the CSE/CPSC on behalf of the Board of Ed. Do I have a motion? Barry, thank you, and Xavier.
I do have a quick question, though. So, if I'm away...
All right, well, I will tell you, Linda, that this has been needed, I think, once in the past three years.
Right, no, I know. Just knowing that I'm leaving a week from now, it's, there's, not gonna be an issue, right?
I can almost, without guaranteeing 100,000 percent, that it's not gonna be needed.
As long as it's, yeah, I just don't want to be a problem.
Like I said, once in three years, and our special ed department overall is aces, and they are well ahead of themselves.
Yes, I know.
I think I did it once the whole time. I was in that position. I think I had to come over once. All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor? Great. Okay, let me just make sure I'm on the right spot. Appointment of impartial hearing, right?
There's two things here, so you can either take them together or take them separately. They are related. And this, again, if Linda would like to be in that same spot with respect...
These kind of go hand in hand, don't they, the two?
Impartial hearing officers are really dictated for us by a rotating list that's provided by the State Education Department. That doesn't mean we don't have to approve them formally, but Christine has been serving in that capacity as well, should there be a need to appoint in between meetings. This is a little bit more unpredictable, but again, I don't even remember this happening in the past five years, so...
Are you okay doing this one too, then?
Sure.
Okay. Christine, you're okay passing it on to Linda?
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education arrange for the appointment of an impartial hearing officer from the impartial hearing officer list in accordance with the rotational selection process established in Section 200.2 EIIII and 200.2 B9 of the Part 200 Regulations of the Commissioner and the Administrative Procedures Established by the Board of Education.
You can either take that separately, where you can...
I think we should do it all together.
Go for it.
Does anybody have a problem with that? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that Linda Deanna approve the appointment of impartial hearing officers between board meetings on behalf of the Board of Education should the need arise. I need a motion. Make the motion.
I got Christine, and Tom is a second. All in favor? Yes, everyone. Okay, oh, boy, here we go.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint George Austin Lead Operations Manager...
No, it's lead.
Lead, right. Operations Manager Services, bestest designee for the 2018-19 school year. Thank you for understanding. I need a motion. Motion.
Barry, in a second. Bill, a motion and a second. Anybody have any, anything? All right, all in favor? That's everyone. Okay.
Central Treasurers, Extra Classroom Activity Accounts Building Level. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint building level central treasurers for the 2018 school years as delineated below. I don't have to read them, do I?
You can.
How, you want me to do it? Okay, so for Finley, we have Joanne Garrary.
Yep.
Right? Huntington High School is Patrice Boyle, and at Wood Hall, we have Anna Nakarado.
You got it.
All right, so I need a motion for that.
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Linda, any questions, comments? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Okay. Information Officer, Backup Chief Information Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate Mary Beth Robinett as the Chief Information Officer and Nancy Allard as the Backup Chief Information Officer for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion? Bill, in a second.
Second.
Barry, any, anything? All in favor? Great, thanks, everyone. Civil Rights Compliance Officers. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Kathleen Acker and Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendents as Civil Rights Compliance Officers for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion. Okay, Barry and Bill is a second. All in favor? Because I know nobody's gonna be having a problem with that. Okay, Deputy District Clerk. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Kim Zelman to the position of Deputy District Clerk for the 2018-19 school year. Can I have a motion? I'll make the motion. All right, thank you, Christine, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Great, that's everybody. Since I made her come back in. Right. That'll teach her not to get in her car and drive away faster. You're gonna have to sit next to me now for a whole year. Can you imagine that? It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Ed appoint Christine Dougherty to the position of Deputy Treasurer for the 2018-19 school year.
Motion.
Thank you, Tom. Motion? Yep, second. Bill, excellent. All in favor? Just jump right in. No, do it. Are you kidding? It gets us out of here faster. Dignity Act Coordinators. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Dignity Act Coordinators and Associated Support Personnel as delineated in the attached documentation. We obviously have that documentation. I assume it'll be public after the meeting?
The Dignity Act, Dignity Act Documentation, Dignity Act, thank you, Jen. The documentation is attached.
Excellent, thank you.
Stay ready.
All right, we need a motion. Motion. Thank you, in a second, Christine. So, it's Barry, Christine, all in favor? I almost got the superintendent to say hot diggity dog. I was thinking Christine. Okay, I was this close. Election Personnel. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint election personnel as delineated in the attached memorandum. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Linda, any discussion? Nope. All in favor? I gave you guys all about three seconds for discussion.
Yeah.
Health and Safety Consultants. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Eastern Suffolk Bosse to provide health and safety consult, consultant services for the 2018-19 school year. Can I get a motion? Xavier, and a second from Christine. All in favor? Great, that's all of us. Okay, now, this is lead. Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint district lead evaluators for the 2018-19 school year as listed below. Did you want, I don't know, do you want me to go through it?
You don't need to read them. That list might be modified if there are new people appointed to positions that have not yet been trained as per district protocol, but as of this point, that list pertains to what we're talking about.
Excellent. Okay, we need a motion.
Motion.
Tom, in a second.
Second.
Barry, all in favor? That's all of us.
And all these documents, by the way, the attachments are public.
Are all on board docs. Okay, this one makes me sad. Liaison for Homeless Children and Youth. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Gail Mahoney to serve as liaison for homeless children and youth for the 2018-19 school year. I get a motion. Linda, in a second. Christine, all in favor? Thank you, all of us. Records Access Officer and Management. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Gail Mahoney to service, oh, I'm sorry, guys, I didn't skip down. Thought I did. Here we go. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Joanne Miranda as the Records Access Officer and Records Management Officer for the 2018-19 school year. Motion?
Motion.
Barry, in a second. Linda, all in favor? Great. Residency Hearing Officer. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Kathleen Acker Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as Residency Hearing Officer for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Tom, in a second. I'll second it. That's Christine. All in favor? Let's make sure it switches on me.
504.
Yep. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction as a Section 504 Compliance Officer relative to the Americans with Disabilities Act for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Barry, in a second. Xavier, all in favor? All of us. All right, bonding of employees. Here we go. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education secure excess bonding listed below for the 2018-19 school year. Do you want me to read those numbers?
You can. You don't need to.
Okay, let's just keep going. I need a motion.
Motion.
Tom, in a second. Linda, all in favor? Great. Okay, Bank Depository. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate and authorize the attached list of banking facilities to receive school district deposits for the 2018-19 school year. Obviously, we have that. Anybody like to make a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Barry, in a second. Linda, all in favor? Everyone. Newspapers. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate Huntington News, Long Islander, The Times, Beacon Record, and Newsday as newspapers authorized to receive, print the district's legal notices for the 2018-19 school year. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Thank you, Christine, in a second. Tom, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Certifiers of Payroll. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services to certify all payrolls for the 2018-19 school year. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Barry, in a second. Bill, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Petty Cash Accounts. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that petty cash accounts be maintained and administered by the designated employee at the locations and in the amounts listed below. There's a whole list for our school district. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Tom, in a second. There's Xavier. All in favor? Great, everyone.
No, I don't know if we get, if these accounts even are touched during the year.
It is...
Not worth running away with.
No.
Yeah, well, that's it. I mean, really, where are you going? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education to appoint Roberta Roth as the district's purchasing agent and Kathleen Acker Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as the Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2018-19 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Barry, in a second. Christine, all in favor? Great. Why it's getting so far down? School pesticide. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint George Austin Lead Operations Manager to serve as school pesticide representative for the 2018-19 school year. Can I get a motion? Linda, in a second. Bill, motion and a second. All in favor? Great.
It's a rough meeting for George. He just picked up asbestos and pesticide.
I was gonna say.
Will we get a special suit for that?
What about letta beat?
Let's relax.
Is that coming up next? Oh, he got, he had that too, whether he's appointed or not. Trifecta.
I'll give you a special suit.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board grant authority to the Superintendent of Schools to transfer funds within the budget as per Section 170.2 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education and the Board of Education Policy, 5330. Can I have a motion, please? Tom, in a second.
Second.
And that was Xavier. All in favor? All of us. All of us. I think there's a better way to do this, but I don't know how.
Do you want the paper? Would that help?
No, it's good. It's almost people don't mind reading. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education grant authority to the Superintendent of Schools to apply for and sign all grant applications and reports for both state and federal grants. Motion?
Motion.
Barry, and a second. Linda, all in favor? Terrific, thank you. I'm just saying, there's probably another way, and I look like a dope doing it this way. But that's the way it goes.
Doing just fine.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and District Clerk to sign and execute contracts for health services. I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Tom, and a second.
Second.
Okay, Barry, motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, School Facilities Use. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve organizations listed on the attached as users of the Huntington School District facilities. End this part, right? Shall I read this? Just that the ones not listed may be reviewed by the Board of Education on future, at future board meeting, the genders for facility use consideration.
You approve facility users throughout the year.
Right.
And even once an organization is approved to use a facility, they still have to put an application in and have the administration approve that specific use.
Okay.
Based on board policy.
Very good. All right, then I need a motion.
Motion.
Linda, and a second.
A second.
Christine, all in favor? Thank you. And I went by Mileage Reimbursement. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve the attached list of staff members to be reimbursed at the IRS rate for mileage expenses related to district business for the 2018-19 school year. I need a motion.
Motion.
Tom, and a second. Bill, all in favor? Tuition Contracts. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and District Clerk to enter into tuition contracts as necessary for the 2018-19 school year. Motion?
Motion.
Barry, and a second. Bill, all in favor? Yep. Good as go. Oops, I passed us by. Investment Policies. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, reaffirm Policy 5220 about district investments adopted initially on June 11, 2001. And we all have that. Does anybody, Linda, thank you, a second. Christine? Any questions, comments? All good? All right, all in favor? Ask for another motion. Thank you, that was everybody. You can just get to sit here and laugh at me as I stumble through this meeting, don't you?
You're almost there.
Almost there. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education reaffirm purchasing policies 5420, purchasing, competitive bidding and offering, 5422, which is alternate formats for instructional services, alternative, I should say, and 5430, contracts for services and materials.
Take that one separately.
Okay, can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Thank you. Barry and Christine is a second. Anybody, anything? All in favor? Great, thank you, everyone. It is also upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, bypass for read, first read approval and adopt amendments to policies 5410, Principles of Purchasing, and 5420, Purchasing, Competitive Bidding and Offering, both of which have been revised to reflect newly mandated requirements for procurements using federal awards as contained in Uniform Federal Guidance Documentation. So, in other words, we're gonna just skip right over that first read and because it's just basically...
Right, so the only changes, these, these two policies in years past have been lumped in with the other three. They were pulled out this year because we had a recommendation from our auditor that we include additional language in the policy. It really doesn't change the essence of it, it just adds in, and we'd have to do this anyway because it's by law, requirements for procurements using federal awards that, that need to be contained and that, that are contained in the Uniform Guidance Document. So if you read A, B, and C in Policy 5420, it lays it out, and we don't have a choice.
So it has to be...
We're legally bound to do that, yes.
Okay, very good.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Christine, and a second. Linda, thanks. All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna get down to readoption of all policies. Well, why don't we just do this right from the start? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, re-adopt all current board policies as presented in the Huntington Union Free School District's Policy Manual. So in other words, everything we approved this past year too, and all of that.
Correct, everything that's currently in there. And as I mentioned, we will hold a Policy Committee Meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, which is gonna have a, a list on it, but this is an ongoing process for the district.
Very good. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Tom, second.
Second.
Xavier, Tom and Xavier, all in favor? Fabulous. Okay. Readoption of Code of Conduct.
I'll add here that last year there were some material changes based on some new practices that have been instituted that have actually worked very well, as you know. There was no material change from 1718 to 1819. That's why we're readopting without public hearing.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the revised District Code of Conduct. Motion?
Motion.
Christine, and second. Tom, all in favor? Yep, did everybody hear that? All right. I thought I lost all of you over there. All right. Adoption of Religious Holidays. We're almost there, kids. Close. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt the attached list of Religious Holidays from the 2018-19 school year for the purpose of state aid computation. We all have that list. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion.
Linda, and a second.
A second.
Christine, anybody, anything? All right, all in favor? Thank you, everybody. Um, Participation in National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt the attached resolution to continue in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. I need a motion.
Motion.
Tom, and a second.
Second.
Barry, all in favor? Thank you. And Establishment of School Lunch Prices. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, set school meal prices for the 2018-19 school year as delineated below. Everybody saw those. All you read, a breakfast is going to be $1.90, elementary lunch will be $2.65, secondary lunch will be $3, and milk will be 50 cents.
This is accurate, reflects an increase of...
A dime.
A dime.
Across, on all those...
Across the meal, not, not, not the milk.
Not milk. Everything else, the meals. All right. I think Christine made a motion. Anybody have a second? Tom, all in favor? All right, and I think that brings us to the bottom of our list, doesn't it? All right, so I'm looking for, and I can't do it now. So I need a motion to adjourn. Barry, second is Tom.
The left one doesn't do it. Never even seen Barry at a board meeting before.
And there she is.
Make that blaring thing.
Sometimes he'll smack your chair suddenly, too, be ready for that. He does do that sometimes, for real. What's going on here, Mr. Blansky?
Do I have to do the pledge of allegiance and everything all over again?
Oh, good. So we're just going right to the public hearing?
So you do need to, you know, you do need to open the meeting, open the public meeting. You don't have to pledge, so motion. Motion to, to go into public session? That's right, I can see.
Oh, boy.
All right, folks, we are back, and I need a motion to go into public session. Christine, and I need a second for public session. Barry, all in favor to go into public session? Thank you. Now I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you. Tom, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? All right, and we are into the hearing.
All right, so this is Phase Two of the Smart Schools Investment Plan for the Huntington School District that is going to be introduced. Recall that I believe Phase One was approved back in November of...
2016.
2016. Mary Beth Robinette is our Chief Information Officer, just reappointed. Kathleen Acker, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services, have worked very hard with, we have a tech committee, members of all factions of the district community that have worked very hard to formulate this next piece of our plan. You're on, Mary Beth.
Okay, welcome. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to just briefly talk about what is the Smart Schools Bond Act. It was a proposal by Governor Cuomo to fund technology and expand pre-K throughout the state. It was voted in November 2014, and Huntington can apply for $1.4 million. We are required, if we spend money on instructional technology, to include St. Pat's in our distribution of the funds. The purpose of the Bond Act is to acquire learning equipment for facilities, like our interactive whiteboards, projection systems, devices. We can use it for infrastructure upgrades. We can construct our, or modernize our facilities to accommodate pre-K programs. We can install high-tech security features, such as video surveillance and door access systems. To get the funding, we have to have an approved three-year technology plan, which we do. I'm in the process of creating the new plan that's due in the fall of 2018. It's nearly completed, and then it goes to Eastern Suffolk, who reviews it before getting sent to the state. We have to have a committee of stakeholders that create and review the plan. We have to have a public hearing, which we're doing right now. We had to post the plan on our website for 30 days and gather any community comments. We need to make adjustments if needed, and then post the final plan on the website. And then it gets submitted to New York State for approval. I got no community comments.
It hasn't posted for 30 days.
No. Our plan so far, we asked for, back in 2016, $460,000. We bought 1,155 Chromebooks and 10 flat-panel smartboards at that time. Because it was instructional technology, we had to give some of the money to St. Pat's, and they got 171 Chromebooks and charging carts. We take our number of students and their number of students, total it, and then figure out how much, whatever we're spending per pupil, they get that amount to spend per pupil. One of the things that we have to do is show that we are committed to technology, not just using money from the state. So, we have made a lot of commitment to technology in this district. We have purchased devices. And if we're grade six, seven, and nine, we also have the one-to-one initiative in seven through 12. We're purchasing new devices for grades three through five. We're pushing our old devices down to grades one and two, so they will have touchscreens this year and full classroom sets. We're taking the 12th grade, the devices that the 12th graders have, and we're moving them down to K, since they returned them and they were only used for one year. So the kindergarten students will have classroom sets. We have spent lots of money buying new carts, charging carts, which are wonderful. They don't overcharge the devices, and they charge everything evenly. We've bought 36 last year, 61 this year. We've also replaced some of our older smartboards with the flat-panel boards. And we have improved our infrastructure, so now we're at 1 gigabyte for 4,500 students, which is well over the minimum requirement. And we have bought access points, and so we have really good connectivity throughout the district, and anywhere we don't, we have more devices to add. So we've shown a great commitment to technology.
Can I just mention the, the change to rollout for next year, I think?
It's right here. So one of the things that we're doing differently next year is we are, for our one-to-one devices, we're giving out devices in sixth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade. In sixth grade, the students will start out with classroom sets. But in the middle of the sixth grade year, we're going to give those devices to the students to then take home. So it will be like a, a transition year. And then those students will keep those devices throughout their middle school career. So they will take them with them from sixth grade to seventh and eighth. And then in eighth grade, we'll collect devices. If they're still usable, we'll repurpose them. And we're doing the same thing in ninth grade, so we collected the eighth graders' devices. We're giving them new devices in ninth grade. And at the end of 12th grade, you know, if they're four years old, they're probably done. But if, you know, like the certain, like the ones we used had this year, we're only one year old, so we're repurposing those. We are, so what we need to do is just figure out our sustainable plan. And what we're doing in the upcoming years is we're going to replace one grade of Chromebooks in grades K to five, and then in sixth grade, they'll be getting new devices, and in ninth grade. So that's the plan, to not have a, you know, 50,000 devices all at once that are dead. We also are replacing our current older smartboards, so we have about 175 boards that still are older, and we're going to replace them over the years with the flat-panel devices. Excuse me? We, it's, sometimes we reuse them in other places, so when we have ones that are still working well, we put them in other classrooms that didn't have a board. You know, so some of our, like, reading or RTI math teachers got devices that way, or music rooms, things like that, where they didn't originally get devices. But a lot of them are just shot and they have to be disposed of.
If they're completely obsolete, they go on the bid list for disposal, and we don't get many takers for them after a certain period of time because the, the technology changes so quickly. But we do put it out there.
The, the, one of the things, when you take them down, it's really hard to keep everything working well. You know, they're very sensitive, so like, I have one that I used for professional development in the rotunda, and it worked, like, three of the four cameras worked, so there was parts of the board that just didn't have the touchscreen, so I just didn't write on that part, but, you know, it's, you use what you can get.
And nobody really orders those portable boards anymore because the travel that it takes its toll, and they just break down.
And they have to be constantly recalibrated, and it just takes time away from... But the, the flat panels are great, and the ones that we've been purchasing are adjustable, so it's really fabulous. So if, you know, you're in a science room and they need to be raised up because there's those high tables, they can raise them up. And if we're in a kindergarten room and the kids want to reach the board to use it, we lower them down, and it's been a really great...
The replacements there across all the buildings, or are they primarily in a certain place?
No, they're all, all throughout the buildings. And some people really love their old ones and don't want to give up the ones. Yeah, they really like them. They're a little bigger, they're, you know, they're, they're used to it, and they like it.
The newer boards, Christine, have much better resolution, but they're actually smaller. So, for me, I can't see two feet in front of me sometimes, so it's, the older boards are easy to see, but some have gotten used, the, the new boards, and won't give them up or anything, so.
So everybody has their favorite. So the reason we want all these devices, it will improve differentiated instruction for our students with disabilities, English language learners, and any student in our district. We can expand learning both inside and outside the classroom. Having devices gives kids access to other students, world leaders, the World Wide Web, other students that they can collaborate with. We can, yes.
Can you give me an example of how it, it helps with the instruction of the students with disabilities and English language class?
Would you like to?
Well, I, I mean, my personal experience in watching my own child, he, like, if you put a math problem in front of him and give him a pencil, he would easily refuse to do it. You write that same problem on the smartboard, and he will go up there and...
And not only that, that we, we have software that we're buying that will individualize learning for students. There's also projects that kids can show what they know by using different software that, you know, makes it more engaging for them, so they can, you know, write a cartoon or make a movie to show what they know as opposed to doing it on pencil and paper.
And doing separate stabs in different colors and different, like, you just...
It's pretty amazing what it's...
So in terms of the ENL students, you're talking about students who may be better off learning visually to a greater degree to start, automatic, instant translation in certain circumstances from language to language.
We have software that, yeah, that... Yep, software that, we also have software that reads to the students, so if they have a reading, you know, issue, that it will read to them. They can use text to speech, so they can, I mean, text, speech to text, so they can talk, and it will type it out for them, just like we do with our phones. So there's so many advantages. We're gonna use data to close gaps. We're going to keep communicating with parents and stakeholders by using parent portal, by using eboards, Google Sites, remind, all the different ways that we can use devices to communicate, that having all these devices in the district helps. And it helps us create regional partnerships and distance learning. Some of our teachers have participated in events where they collaborated with the school either across the country or across the state, and they did, you know, Flat Stanley Project, and they interacted, and it's amazing to see what they, the engagement.
Do we know, do we know if, since the kids have gotten the Chromebooks, has the incidence of them logging onto the Student Portal increased a lot? of them logging onto the Student Portal increased a lot? Because I feel like it maybe gives them a easier access.
I haven't looked to see if it's increased, but I know that it's fairly widely used. And we, you know, but I don't, I, I.
This is important for their own, you know, for taking responsibility for their own, for their own gradebook and all that, you know, to check on.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that, but I could look and see if there's a difference.
I think a lot of that stuff was kind of rolled out at the same time, so it would be hard to see, you know, with the increased use of the portal, there's more reason, and then the devices were brought out at the same time.
Well, as more students, yeah.
So, it's harder to see like what you want, which is like a single parameter before and after, because we have two things changing.
Right, well, except that more students have Chromebooks now than did when the Student Portal was version two. Not every student had one.
Can I ask a question about the communication? Are more and more teachers using Google Classroom? And if they are, it seems, through my kids, yes. Are they still maintaining the e-board? Are they?
I think that I, a lot of teachers still have e-boards and are still using them. I, you know, I've seen a lot of other types of things posted, for example, other resources that a student might want to use. I know, like, my RTI math teachers post math games at sites for kids to use mathematics. So, I do think that the e-boards are still being used, even though they have Google Classroom.
I think you may have teachers now using more alternatives to the e-boards than in years past.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. Google Classroom, because the students have a way to post and ask, and, yeah, it's more to, yes.
More interactive.
Yes. Thank you. So, like I said before, Huntington has been committed to sustainability and committed to technology. We're committed to providing a 21st-century learning experience for all students. We are constantly upgrading our infrastructure, and we're replacing older devices. We provide ongoing staff development. You know, we have our tech mentors that are teachers in the buildings that give our other teachers PD. We also have staff, some people from outside the district that have come in to provide professional development, and that's going to be continuing. And we've been purchasing much more software to support the learning. One of the things that has been great is that teachers have brought software to me and other people in the district and said, "We really love this program. Can we get it?" And in almost all the situations, we've been able to purchase that. So, here's what we started with, 100, well, not 100, $1,407,000. We've spent $463,000. We want to spend another $417,000, and we want to put that toward more Chromebooks. So, that will be about $376,000. We will give, be giving St. Pat's their allocation. We want to get this up to the state because the state has been taking a very long time to get these approved. So, even though we may not need devices right the second, we want to be in the queue so that when we do need devices, we can order them. So, and once we're approved, even if we got approved tomorrow, we don't have to buy the devices right then, we can buy them when we need them. So, that's what the plan is. And then for the future, we are going to use the extra $500,000 to upgrade security features, and we've been sharing that with the tech committee, and there will be more, another plan that will follow about that. Does anybody have anything else, any other questions?
That would be next year, or?
Next year.
And we're still actually in the process of waiting for some of these technologies that have been presented to us for security purposes to actually be fine-tuned, debugged, et cetera, but you're going to notice a lot of districts going in the same direction around the same time.
Okay.
And that's why Mary Beth mentioned about how long it takes these.
Right.
Plans to be approved, it's on the ludicrous side.
Are we planning on using any of this money for pre-K?
Um, not as, not at this moment. I think we're really going to be spending most of it on the security upgrades, but that would be something that, you know.
The pre-K monies would have to be for capital-type infrastructure, and we have been able to actually do that without the allocation, particularly now that we have space in the primary schools. We've used in-house resources to upgrade those, those classrooms, and also with the help of the Scope program that is, that is paying for a part of this as well. We don't necessarily own everything that's in those rooms, but they supply them very well.
Now, this is a great funding that we received, and it's going to kind of create a chain of, we have to keep replacing and replacing and replacing. What do we do when this money runs out?
Well, luckily, we've been able to keep up with all the devices that, even without using a lot of this, we have, so, right now, we've been able to support it with the general fund, and hopefully, we'll continue that way.
Part of the plan is to be able to refresh every regrade levels a year, moving forward to, again, the devices that have been really long to speak by students and staff, and this is just seed money, you know, that's, they're, you know, very good start on the one, but once it took hold initially and we saw the changes it was making, we're going to get commitment to identify how, you know, the prices have gone down on the devices, because those schools are so much of one, and we found a way to, they are lasting three or four years each device, so it's not, you know, they're, they're back disposable, so it's been working out so far. Hopefully, we can maintain that.
It's a valid question, though, because this is not the gift that keeps on giving. At some point, this money is not going to be there, and even with the infrastructure upgrades, which is, I think, more long-lasting than the devices themselves, that's going to change over time as well. So, one of the criticisms of this whole program was that if you're going the route of devices at some point, when that money is not there, Kathy just mentioned seed money, that's what it is, and at some point, the general fund is going to have to kick in for all of it. So, it's a valid question.
We've also been trying to take advantage of e-rate funding that's up there, and there was a couple of asterisks on there for internet, as well as our access points. We've been able to get money through the e-rate program to fund a large portion of that, as well as some of our servers and, you know, our infrastructure, so there is another small funding source that helps them give us about 60% of the cost of the items. So, you know, when we're just supporting devices, we've been working for everyone to keep it as well, so that's been very helpful.
We've also applied for other, we have a technology, a learning technology grant that we applied for, so we're looking, we're looking at other funding sources whenever possible.
Great, thank you.
All right, so, I think I need a motion to adjourn from the public hearing.
This is actually, it's on the items list for board action.
Thank you, Bill. I got a motion. I need a second. Is Tom all in favor? Now, we need to motion a second to go back into public session, right? Okay, so I need a motion to go into public session. Linda, and a second from Barry, all in favor? Very good. All right, thank you. So, I need approval for the Board of Education meeting minutes of June 4, 2018. Do I have a motion? Xavier, and a second.
Second.
Barry, all in favor? That is a one. Okay, and we have a few FYIs. We have an FYI for the budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of June 30, 2018. We had an FYI budget transfer and an FYI revenue status report as of June 30, 2018. We have a treasurer's report that needs approval. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Christine, and second, Tom, all in favor? Thank you. And warrants. I need approval. Motion. Anyone?
Motion.
Oh, Linda, and second, Tom, all in favor?
That's a big dog. That's a big dog we just did.
Yeah, the warrants.
We just authorized, we just authorized $60 million.
Yeah, like, whoa, dressed like that. Well, not even, not even in a minute, we were able to spend that. Okay, we are up to communications and announcements. Um, we, you know, haven't been together for a while, since before graduation. Do any of my fellow trustees have any comments, or just, anything they'd like to say?
I just have one thing to say.
Yes, Tom?
I thought graduation was really, really nice this year.
Oh, it was fantastic.
It was a great day. It was a good ceremony and.
Excellent speeches by everybody, actually. Yeah, it was a wonderful day.
So, thank you to all of those who contributed to making it such a wonderful day.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom?
Mr. Paul Kalak.
And I, I just wanted to thank Tom for his three. What was that? What did I miss?
I'm just staring him down. That's all right.
Next year, we're doing it all different. Next year's going to be completely new.
And I just wanted to thank Tom for his three years of service as school board president and giving us all your time that goes into it. Don't worry, Jen, it won't be as much time for you, but, and, and you did a very nice graduation as well, your speech, so thank you.
And he didn't even cry with his own kid graduating.
I know. It's amazing. But yes, thank you to Tom Giacomo, our fearless leader for the last three years, because you were an excellent president, and, you know, I hope I don't pale in comparison to you, Tom.
Not a chance.
But thank you for your service to this Board of Education.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Senior awards night.
Oh, yes, thank you, sure.
Right, so I had the honor of attending three moving-up ceremonies this year. High school was really special, Finley and Woodhall, they did a great job. And the luau at Woodhall, which was a lot of fun, my daughter enjoyed, and the senior awards night, kids walked away with a lot of scholarship money. My daughter was one of them, so it was a great night.
So nice to be proud of all those kids.
Yes.
I just mentioned that I've been at the high school the last couple of days in, for the mornings, with lots of camps going on there, and there are so many happy kids there, I can't even explain. They're, they're having the time of their lives, the time of their lives. And the air conditioning is not hurting anything.
Yeah.
No, it is not. It actually crawls out into the lobby, which it's not supposed to, but we'll take it.
Yeah, and as, I, I know there are other things going on there besides this, the scale camp, but Mr. Stilletto is doing an amazing job leading it there, and there are more kids than there have been in past years, so it's growing.
Such a great program, it really is. All right, anyone else?
Oh, one thing I did want to mention, we did have the Booster Club gala thing out last week, and.
Is there a winner?
You heard me, you know, ad nauseam, push those membership raffle tickets, and we do have someone over there that won the first place.
No, no.
Well, that is, the wife of Mr. Cusack won her prize.
Yeah. The nice thing was also, the third-place winner was Barbara Cutrone, who was actually one of the founding, or, or the person who revitalized the Booster Club after so many years, so it was great to hear her name announced. And, and it went really well. We had 26 foursomes, I believe, and a nice little reception afterward, so we are going to be continuing to do that again. It'll always be the Monday after graduation. I mean, we got super lucky with the weather, so hopefully.
It was beautiful.
That stays, but thank you to everyone who participated. And congratulations to Mrs. Cusack. Yes.
He's not going to see a penny of it, so.
No, you get it. And he should. All right, we're throwing it to you, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, I'm going to move quickly here. I do want to highlight that Ms. McCoy, myself, Mary Beth, I don't know if she's still here, yes, she is, and Nancy Allard, another one of our backup chief information officer, had the, I'll look at it as an opportunity to attend the Every Student Succeeds Act training. There is a new accountability slash much more program that is going to basically be applied to every school district across New York State, and it was a little bit eye-opening, the four of us sitting there, taking this in for the first time. It is now open for public comment, so what, what has happened is the, the new, it used to be the ESEA, No Child Left Behind, is now ESSA, and there's a whole new set of criteria on which schools will be evaluated. It's a little bit more broad-scale, it's not just exam performance, there are other factors pieced in there, like school climate, chronic absenteeism, of course, now I'm going to draw a blank, but growth as well as achievement, ENL performance in terms of NICE SLAT, so there's a lot more there, but there's still, and don't let it fool you too much, because there's still a fairly hefty emphasis on, on achievement on state assessments. There are items that'll be added over the next couple of years in terms of suspensions, that, that's, that school-level suspensions that'll be factored in. There's still some things that concern, we did listen very carefully, and I can tell you that we, we listened to the information about draft regulations. They are now open for public comment for the next, I think, through August 17th, so they're not actually implemented yet, and I can tell you that myself and several others in this district have made our, as best we can, voices heard about the things that we are concerned with in Huntington. Mary Beth and I were on the same page here, focusing on certain things related to math performance at the high school that we don't think is, is, for example, students earn the same type of leveling or rating for their performance with the same number of performance, I should say, on an Algebra II exam and geometry exams that do on an Algebra I exam, and the exams are at a slightly different level. So, we've made our voices heard. I don't know if it's going to make an impact, but hopefully, they will come to the realization that some of these things are just not going to work particularly well, but more to be heard and seen there. UPK, I should mention that our universal pre-kindergarten program is expanding considerably in the district, which is something that we had hoped for, and the vision basically dictated that this was the way it was going to go, and I'm happy to, to announce that we now have a pre-kindergarten section in every elementary school, and we are scheduling these students so that the majority of them will be attending kindergarten in the schools that they attend pre-K, and so it helps them get a little bit more acclimated. And at Jefferson, there will actually be an extended-day program, almost a full-day program for those parents who request, we tried to get as many in as possible there, so the partnership that we have with Scope in this regard has been invaluable. And the graduation mentioned, thank you, Mr. Cusack and staff at the high school. The graduation statistics are very attractive, kids are doing very well, we have the majority going on to two- and four-year schools and other things that they are interested in, which is most important to us, and they're, they're, they've just done a great job. The class of 2018 will be missed, obviously, on numerous levels, and summer is underway. Christine mentioned music camp, Booster Club camps are underway, the capital work being done across the district. If you drive from building to building, Washington was out, without a roof for a couple of days, they already put the new roof on, so we did not wait very long to get this work underway. Thank you to Mr. Austin and his staff. There's a lot of work to be done this summer, but it's, it's looking like we'll have everything signed, sealed, and delivered on time for the board facilities tour. And I think that, that'll do it.
Okay, very good. Well, then we are coming to our first public commentary section. Our public commentary is limited to residents of the district or people that either work in the school district or students of our school district, employees. You have three minutes to speak at the mic. It's not a question-and-answer period, so if you have a question, it's not going to be answered from this table at this point, but somebody will reach you later after this meeting if you do have an issue that needs addressing. So, I'm going to open it up. Oh, yeah, no, thank you, and there should be no mention of personnel or any specific students' names, so you can come up and speak about something generally, but do not use specific students or staff members' names at the microphone, please.
Of course, please.
Yeah, I know, but there's so few people here, I figured I wouldn't waste my time. So, usually, the first part of public commentary would only be for items for discussion and action, and then if we have time left over in the 30 minutes, you could come up and address other topics, but I'm assuming, looking around this room, that we're not going to go over the 30 minutes. Oops, stay where you are. Is there anybody that would like to approach the mic?
Maybe they should sign in.
Oh, yes, and if you haven't signed in already, when you're done speaking, if you would go over and sign in in case we need to contact you.
Sign in, she is actually.
Oh, it's up there. Oh, okay, good. There you go, you can sign in right now.
Good job.
She's going to sign in, and I'm just going to pass around, everybody was emailed a copy of it, and it's just for the documentation for everybody to look at.
Should I put my last name?
You can, honey.
Sure.
Is it one pack?
Yes, one big package. It was all.
Might as well.
You have more for along the lines to contact you following if there's any information to share.
Good evening, members of the board, Huntington staff, and families. My name is Brooke Parks, and I am here tonight to ask you that I may be granted a school bus to transport me to family school for my seventh and eighth-grade years of attendance. I'm aware of your policy that I live under one mile away from the school. However, my road, Green Lawn Road, is not safe for me to walk to on two times a day. There is a large blind curb and no ample shoulder or sidewalk on many parts of Green Lawn Road to and from school. Please come walk on my road to see for yourselves and understand what I mean by all of this. I have seen a lot of cars get into accidents on my road. My parents. My parents and I have researched what makes a road safe to walk on for kids, and our road does not meet those rules. We have supplied you with pictures of my road and also with the US and New York Department of Transportation guidelines and checklists. My parents have spoken with the Suffolk Police and the town, they do not have any plans whatsoever to add a sidewalk, enforce speeding, or add safety barrier, or increase the shoulder. The other kids in the area who walk fortunately do not have to walk on Green Lawn Road, they live behind me and this is, they don't use the Green Lawn Road to walk. Also, if their parents choose to drive their kids, well, mine can't because of their work schedules. Also, I have seen the Finley bus passing my house last year. Thank you for your consideration, Brooke Parks.
Good job.
You did an excellent job advocating for yourself, well done. Is there anybody else that had a, wanted to come to the mic? You did a great job, thank you. All right, we are going to continue moving on to our items for discussion and action. So, we are up to Board Policy 4212, the district organizational chart.
So this is, it is actually a policy, it is very similar in nature to the 2017-18 version, a couple of lines shifted or added, nothing really material to talk about here, and we'd like to, we'd like to readop for the, we recommend its readoption for 2018-19.
Okay. Thank you, I don't know, I'm honestly suddenly not showing up, but...
Yeah.
So do we need to, um, oh, that's...
It should be.
It should be, but it disappeared on me, so that's okay. So I'm just looking for a motion, though, right? So it is upon recommendation of Superintendent of Board here, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education waive first read and issue final approval of Policy 4212, the organizational chart for 2018-19. Thank you, Tom. So I need a motion. Which I got Christine and a second is Barry. Did anybody have any questions, comments, anything about this?
Only question I was, what changed?
It's a good question.
In the, in the area of chairs and coordinators, we added a line just to multi-supervise, really nothing of a material nature.
Thank you.
I just lost my connection. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, that is everybody. Tom, I'm gonna have to ask you if I can jump aboard yours. Okay, so now we have the internal audit report. Did you wanna fill it in, or should I just read it out?
Well, you can read the recommended action, motion, second, and if there are any questions, add the description then.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education accept outcomes of the 2016-17 internal audit process as attached, prepared by Sheehan and Company. So I'm looking for a motion and a second, and then any comments, discussion.
Motion.
Tom, second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda.
So the first thing you might notice there is it's the outcomes of the 16-17 audit process and beyond the control of anybody on our audit committee, our internal auditors have been working particularly slowly. One of the reasons we are also looking for, well, we've actually appointed for 18-19 a different internal auditor. But that said, this particular audit was very favorable for the district and looked at payroll tax filings and reconciliations, free reduced price lunch, eligibility and verification, which is quite the process in capital expenditures. So if you've had a chance to review, the audit committee has already reviewed it in detail.
Yes, we did.
And recommends its acceptance.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Anybody else have any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that is everybody. All right, I'm gonna continue to steal your...
That's one that I just...
Oh, because I'm trying to, yeah, no, thank you. Okay, internal audit management letter and corrective action plan. So it's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education approve the attached correction, corrective action plan in response to the internal audit conducted by Sheehan and Company for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion.
Okay, Linda, thank you, and a second, Barry. Anything you wanna add to this?
Mrs. Ackers, is there anything you'd like to highlight here in terms of corrective action? I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward.
It's very straightforward, and, and a majority of the findings we had already identified internally prior to the audit and had already put corrective actions into place, so we felt very comfortable with the audit. In that, again, most, most of their findings had already been corrected prior to receiving their findings.
Yeah, and I can confirm that at our audit meeting, almost every single one of the things had already been corrected.
Despite the fact that we're not supposed to be serving as our own internal auditor, the good thing is that we are, and that's not our role, obviously, but we, we are noticing any minor shortcomings in these areas before they even got to them.
That's true.
My hope is that the 17-18 process will be done within the next few months, once that happens, we have 18-19 to begin shortly thereafter.
All right, so, we had a motion and a second, all in favor? That is everyone, thank you very much, Tom. Okay, so we are up to the meal shaming plan, which is a brand-new policy, correct?
It's not a policy, it's, it's a plan.
Plan now.
The plan actually needs to be...
Bad title.
I know, yeah.
It is a terrible title.
It's a terrible title, I totally agree, that's why I felt like I needed to say something after it, because it was such an awkward, funny title.
But the plan is a good plan.
It's for a good reason, but they needed a better name. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education adopt the attached plan to ensure that students with unpaid meal charges are not shamed or treated differently than students without unpaid meal charges. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Barry, and second is Xavier. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor? Excellent, that's everybody, thank you.
And one of the policies that the committee will be evaluating during our next meeting is the policy that aligns with this particular plan.
Okay. And the last thing is the Smart Schools Investment Plan. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt Phase Two of the district's Smart Schools Investment Plan. Can I get a motion? Christine and a second from Tom. Any discussion at all? I know we kind of already discussed this. All in favor? That is everybody, thank you very much. All right, now, Ms. McCoy, I think we're up to you, right, first?
Yes.
Here we go.
On recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education approve CSE CPSE submissions as delineated.
Okay, can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Barry and a second, Bill, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Personnel, Mr. Polanski. Uh, wait a second. Is that for this?
Yes.
Yes.
I know why.
Great.
I may have to pull out that entire schedule.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think it's gonna make it. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm going to ask the board...
Barry, you wanna announce the donations?
Sure.
So I'm going to ask the board, I'm gonna do this in two steps here, to start for approvals on schedules one, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, 19, and 22.
Okay, so you all heard that, can we get a motion for those, I'm not repeating them?
Motion.
Tom and a second, Linda, all in favor? That's everybody, thank you.
Okay, and actually, moving forward, what I can probably do is I can have those items in each schedule numbered, so it doesn't have to be the entire schedule, but I think it's, it's gonna work regardless. So now I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedule three alone.
Okay.
Now, somebody need to recuse?
I could, I'll recuse myself.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Christine's making a motion.
And I'll second.
And Barry's seconding, and all in favor?
And I'll recuse myself.
And that's why you were, okay, and Xavier is going to, I'm standing, I'll recuse. All right, and that's all of that. So now we're up to Dr. Ackers.
Hang on, I have a couple of announcements to make here.
Oh, sorry, of course.
Quite a few.
What was I thinking?
We were very patient, so...
One of the better parts of the meeting.
So, first of all, you know, we, we take our, I don't have to say this, and it's the start of a new year, but I do wanna mention that one of the things that we, among many that we take very seriously is bringing new people into the district when positions are available. The vetting process is, it could be a little bit overwhelming for candidates coming in because they're meeting a lot of different people at a lot of different times, but I'd like to think that based on the people that I have here, we have together here, we've done a pretty good job over the past couple of years, and I look at what we're starting to do for 18-19 as a continuation, if not even an extension of it. So first and foremost, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal of Huntington High School, Dr. Lizette Lors. No doubt she is going to be terrific, and I'd like to thank her for surviving through the multiple visits and phone conversations. She's been terrific, and, and I think with her, what you see is what you get, and that's what we want. So welcome, Lizette, and we look forward to working together.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, on schedule three, a number of, of new staff members to announce, and I'm gonna go in alphabetical order here, so starting with new math teacher at the middle school level, and I think I saw her here, Danielle Calderaro. In the world language department, Huntington High School graduate, Mercedes Trejos.
Oh, that's cool.
School counselor at Huntington High School, Jasmine Mahia Wong. Has just been appointed as dean of the two, four, five, six buildings, Adam Sherard. Also, very excited to welcome a new elementary teacher in this building, another Huntington High School graduate, Desiree Strappoli. You guys wanna jump out of your chairs and scream, it's okay.
I don't know where you are, right? Give us a sign.
Believe me, we are so excited to have them, this is a little bit of an intimidating situation for them, but as soon as everybody else leaves, I wanna see you jumping out of those chairs. Also appointed at the elementary level as an RTM math teacher, Shannon Taflack, I don't think Shannon's here with us anymore.
They're here, yeah, representing.
We're excited, very excited to have her here as well. Okay, and I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, and so in that case, we are up to Dr. Ackers' portion.
Okay, so I'm going to be splitting this up a little bit. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education approve items I, 1 through 12, and I, 14 through 16, J through O.
Do those first, right? Yeah, okay. So, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Tom, and a second, Linda? Okay, all in favor? That's everybody, thank you.
And then it's upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education approve item I-13 on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, very good. All right, can I get a motion, please?
I need the motion.
Thank you, Christine, and a second?
Second.
All right, Barry, so Christine and Barry, all in favor? And, and one?
I'm Marie Cuser, my wife works there.
That's right, okay, so that was six, and Bill recusing, excellent. All right, so, and donations?
We have a few donations to accept and acknowledge. The first one is from Mr. Patrick Black, family in the district, who has generously donated equipment to the music department in a value of $3,800, different bass stands, stands, amplifier, other stands, tambourines, drums, cymbals, microphones, et cetera, and will go to good use in our music department, so we thank him for that. And we accepted a donation of $7,000 from the Costin Foundation, which is going to Flower Hill Primary School, and this donation is in recognition of Ms. Lucia Legarda's former service, services and membership on the Board of Directors, so that's a lovely...
That is really lovely. I was so glad when I saw that one.
We really appreciate that.
That is cool.
And lastly, from the Huntington Robotics Incorporated, we are accepting a Grizzly GO-759 mill drill with stand and digital readout for the Huntington Robotics team and has a value of $2,110.
Thank you.
So we thank them for that.
Okay, one little thing to add, Bob, Paul, you are not to touch that machine. Also, on the business agenda is memorandum, memorandum of agreement, the district has just entered into a three-year agreement with the District School Principals Association, 2018 to 2021. I'd like to thank the unit for their cooperation and work.
Okay, and we are up to our second public commentary session. If there's anybody that had anything to say, now would be the time. All right, then I guess we're going to closing remarks by board members.
Happy summer, everyone.
Great, first meeting, Jen.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you again, I appreciate your support. And then I need, um...
Enter into executive session.
Oh.
Sorry, it'll be quick.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn and enter into executive session, Christine, and the second, Tom. I don't even wanna say all in favor, I guess just raise your hands.
You're all right.
Because we're going, all of you. Thank you, everybody, thank you for coming.
You have to say your turn. Turn these off, or Glenn comes around.
I mean, if you want to.
We're only gonna have one.
See, if it wasn't for the exact session, you would've been out.
We'll take a picture of the page on the...
I don't, we didn't even have a date, that's why, you know, people say that, oh, you know, you have a date yet, and he's like, yeah.